September twelfth, the order, please rise.
Eternal God, our Father, Lord God, we come again saying thank you, Lord God. Lord, we ask that you continue to cover our city, Lord God. Continue to cover each and every one of us, Lord. Cover our fire and our police. Lord, as we continue to go on our day-to-day journey, Lord God, we just thank you and we ask you to bless us in Jesus' name, amen.
Here, let the record show nine present, zero absent, all nine are in chambers. Item number three, the mayor's address, Phil.
Good evening, council. So, sorry, mayor could not make it this evening, he asked me to fill in for him. I was thinking about this this morning, as I was thinking about what we're going to talk about, how the last two and a half years have really just been extremely challenging for the country, but obviously in this situation, we're talking about the city of Hammond in general. Starting, obviously, with COVID and the different waves of that, and then what happened after COVID, and now we're dealing with inflation and supply cost issues and labor shortages, and it's affecting us in a lot of different ways. So, I'm going to touch a little bit on that today, but if you, if anybody's reading the newspaper, I'm assuming a lot of you are, every community in this area is dealing with this. Every day you read an article about a project that came in too high, it's either going to be delayed, or canceled, or value engineered, or something like that. So, what we're experiencing right now is going on across the country, and, you know, I think we've done a pretty good job of trying to work our way through this. So, with that, let me talk a little bit about the voluntary retirement program, or what a lot of people refer to as the buyout, which is up for third and final reading today. I know mayor has spoken about this at council, so I won't talk too extensively about it other than, obviously, there's a win-win situation in a lot of these, which is an employee that has spent a lot of years working for the city of Hammond, that's done a lot of good things, gets a little bonus as they're retiring, and what that does for behalf of the ci, on behalf of the city is, this person typically has the maximum of vacation days and sick pay, and so, there's a, there's a value to that of having that employee move on, and then hiring somebody who's kind of starting over at the beginning of those, of sick and vacation and whatnot. And there's also the fact that when somebody takes the buyout, or if they accept this voluntary retirement program offer, there's going to be opportunities for other employees to now move up, and that's always, I think, an important thing for employees to know that there's opportunities for them in the future. So, from the conversations I've had with several of you, it sounds like everybody's pretty supportive of this, but I just wanted to say, I, I think it's very good for the city of Hammond, for those reasons that I gave, and I hope that you feel the same way and it passes tonight. Megan Flores, our city controller, has now finished meeting with every department head for the 2023 budget. That is a lengthy, extensive process, as I'm sure you can imagine. Some of those meetings could be fifteen minutes, and some of those meetings can be four hours or two days. So, she's finally at the point where she feels she can bring the budget in front of the council at the first meeting in October, and if all goes well, and all the questions are answered, and obviously, if the council feels comfortable, potentially, the budget could pass at the second meeting in October. So, she will be providing the budgets to you as soon as humanly possible, and obviously, there's, there's going to be time for questions and answers, and, you know, like I said, Megan will be the expert on being able to answer most of that, as she's met with every single department head in the city. But we're excited to kind of get to the end of the process and, and move forward. Positive note, you know, a long time ago, I remember coming here and speaking to the council about how we were changing from our, our health insurance, from the rented Cigna network that we had, to United Healthcare. At the time that we came in front of you, we were projecting that there was going to be a savings of about $500,000. I'm happy to report to you that as of today, based on the estimate, now, we have one quarter left for this year, but based on where we're at today, it looks like we are going to save $1 million from the change we made with our health insurance network. So, kudos to the council for, for supporting it. I believe I've heard nothing but positive information from the employees, that the, their health insurance is actually better than it was prior to this, and they have access to more things like apps and technologies a little easier to use when it comes to their health insurance. So, it's a very positive thing, and obviously, a good thing with everything we're going through with budget issues right now. I also wanted to mention that kudos to the fire department and to Megan Flores and her team, because we are able to replace fire engine number seven, which I think a lot of you are aware, there was a crash on 8094 a while ago. Nobody got hurt, fortunately, from on the police side or the fire department side. In fact, there were some very courageous fire department people and police officers, or firemen, and police officers, and how they handled the situation, and how they protected the people that were on 8094, that were in the crash situation, and how they immediately jumped into action to help with medical issues that were going on with the people that were involved with the crash. So, but it could have been a long time trying to replace an engine of this size, and as I understand it, we were able to use state revolving fund, which is always good, and we got a great deal on it and a very low interest rate. So, it's good for us, because obviously, we have to keep that, you know, we need that engine to make sure that everybody has proper access to the fire department. I want to congratulate Calumet College. They opened, they had the ribbon cutting for their dorm this past week. It's, I believe there's sixty-four apartments in there, and all but four beds are already being used, and this is a good sign for the city. As I said at the ribbon cutting, all we can do as a city is try and lay the groundwork to make it that businesses and not-for-profits and schools and residents are in the best position to be successful. If we have a college that's expanding, and not only expanding, but already showing success with the expansion, it just, it shows that it's working, what we're doing. Thank you to Councilman Kalwinski, who spoke on behalf of the city and gave some very good words, kind words. I know Calumet College was excited that we had city people participating in the ribbon cutting, and they're not done. They've got some more expanding to do, when it comes to the things they're trying to do with sports, and who knows, maybe there'll be another dorm in the, in the future, we'll see. Lastly, after I leave here, I'm going to attend a fundraiser for Trade Wins. It's a bowling event, it started us, I'm excited to be there on behalf of the city Hammond and make sure I show off my hundred-and-six score that I'll probably end up with, but I'm going to be leaving right after this, that's the only reason I'm telling you that. But if anybody has any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Councilman Kalwinski.
Thank you. Regarding the buyouts, like, where's that coming out of the budget? What line item might that be coming out of? Do you have any idea?
Yep, I will have Megan come up and answer that question, but, you know, I should mention, obviously, we've talked to a lot of different employees, or employees have talked to us that they may take it if it passes, but obviously, right now, it's all, who knows for sure, right? Because you could pa, you could pass this pro, this ordinance, and less people take it that thought they were going to, or more people do. But if Megan wants to come up and let you know where the funding is coming from.
She's coming up on that fire truck accident, is there insurance acclaimed that we're going to get some money back on?
There was no insurance, because we are self-insured, we are the insurers for that vehicle. So, and, and that's one of the, I guess, challenges when you're self-insured, obviously.
Stand, thank you.
Yes, councilman, so that'll be coming from the personal services budget throughout the general fund, and depending upon where the employees come from, if they're street department workers that are going to be retiring as well and taking advantage of it, then part of it might come from their funds budget, so the MVH fund, or Parks Department the same way.
Thank you. Also, just real quick, I thought I had budget meetings this coming Saturday with you, but are we going to wait till the budget's printed?
Yes, there's some changes that we're going to be implementing that were discussed this morning. I know mayor is going to be reaching out to everybody that wasn't able to attend the lunch today to go into further detail, so we will be pushing it back by one meeting. So, we'll give you guys a date as soon as one's available.
Appreciate it, thanks.
Anybody else?
Can I mention one more thing, councilman, Mr. President? I should have mentioned this earlier, but through this buyout program, it happens to be going on at the same time that the controller's office is switching software. So, hopefully, we're going to become a lot more technological, and we're going to create efficiencies using this, this new software that we have, and I think, from what I've heard from several employees that say they're going to take this buyout, there's going to be opportunities for department heads to possibly change positions around a little bit, maybe combine two positions, use the new software to help with making sure we're still efficient with all of our operations and all the departments. So, it's, it's kind of a, a good time that we're, we're having this potential ordinance pass.
Anyone else have any questions? Thank you, Phil.
Thank you.
Item number four, approval of minutes.
President.
Councilman Spitali.
Motion to accept the minutes from August twenty-two, 2022, be put on file, please.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilman Spitali, seconded by Councilman Emerson, is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Since we're all in chambers, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. Item number five, approval of claims.
Mr. President.
Councilman. Rakos.
Motion to pay claims dated eight twenty-four, 2022, and ending with claims dated nine-seven, 2022. Claim number fifty-one eighty-eight through claim number fifty-five sixty-five, amount eleven million, five hundred ninety-two thousand, five hundred ninety-six dollars and seventeen cents.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilman Rakos, seconded by Councilwoman Vines, is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Hearing none, Clerk Goak, roll call.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes.
Warple. Yes, let the record show, nine in favor, zero opposed. Item number six, public hearings.
Item A, ordinance twenty-two dash thirty-one, sponsored by Councilman Torres, and ordinance vacating a portion of a north-south alley east of Calumet Avenue, lying within the forty-five-hundred block and within petitioner's property in block ten, in Toll and Avery's addition to the city of Hammond, in the city of Hammond, Lake County, Indiana. Item B. Ordinance twenty-two dash thirty-two, sponsored by Councilman Torres, and ordinance vacating a twenty-five-foot portion of the forty-five-hundred block of Cedar Avenue, lying within the petitioner's property in block eleven, in Toll and Avery's addition to the city of Hammond, in the city of Hammond, Lake County, Indiana.
Does anybody wish to speak on these public hearings? Does anybody wish to speak? Does anybody wish to speak? Hearing none, public hearings are now closed. Item number seven, communications. Does anyone have any communications?
Mr. President.
Councilman Rakos.
At September twenty-fifth, the HUGS will present the Hispanic Independence Day Parade starting at noon, from Morton High School west on one hundred and sixty-ninth to Kennedy, and south to one hundred and seventy-third, then to Purdue Northwest on one hundred and seventy-third. Also, following the parade, Hispanic Heritage Month Festival will be held at Purdue Northwest on the one hundred and sixty-ninth Street side from one PM to five PM.
Councilman, what time was that parade?
The parade's at noon, and it starts at Morton and finishes at Purdue on one hundred and seventy-third.
Thank you. Does anybody else have any communications? Does anybody else have any communications?
Mr. President.
Councilman Rakos.
HC three will have their general meeting on October sixth at five PM. Bywell will be providing refreshments, and Chief of Staff Phil Taylor will be there to speak. It's at six o'clock at the Hanson Community Center, that's at Martha in Alabama, at five PM.
What day was that?
October sixth.
Does anybody else have any communications?
Mr. President.
Councilman Rakos.
I've been saving. October eighth, HC three fall cleanup will be held, and it'll start at, we'll be meeting at the Hanson Community Center from nine AM till noon. Refreshments will be provided, and we'll be putting out memos to the schools. We usually get a really good turnout from the students, from, especially from Morton and Scott, but that'll be on October eighth, Saturday, at nine AM.
Got any more?
I think that's it.
Thank you. Does anybody else have anything on the communications?
Mr. President.
Councilman Tyler.
The Hammond Fire Department will once again celebrate Fire Prevention Week with an open house on Saturday, October first, from ten AM to two PM at the Hammond Fire Station number eight, which is located at sixty-three fifty Parrish Avenue. It's open to the public, and all ages are welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else have anything on the communications? Does anybody else have anything on the communication? Does anybody else have anything on the communications? Hearing none, communications are, are closed. Item number eight, committee reports.
Mr. President.
Councilman Torres.
I'll be bringing out ordinance twenty-two thirty-one, twenty-two thirty-two, and twenty-three, twenty-two thirty-three for third and final passage.
Thank you.
From council as a whole.
Thank you. And we also have twenty-two thirty-four coming out, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you. Does anybody else have anything on their committee reports? Does anybody else have anything on their committee reports?
Yes, Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
I, yes, I'd like to report on the capital improvements meeting that took place on September sixth. We approved $4,000 for safe streets and roads for all application assistance through first group engineering. This is for elementary school traffic control. We also approved fourteen thousand, three hundred twenty-five dollars for Chicago Street right-of-way dedication exhibits and assistance through first group engineering. We also approved eighteen thousand, nine hundred thirty-eight dollars and ninety-one cents for Holman Avenue Phase One. This is due to, they're going to take down the awning on the LaSalle Hotel, and that is due to the location of the street light. We also approved thirty-seven thousand, six hundred fifty-three dollars and fifty-eight cents for the Chicago Street Phase One change order through Grimmer Construction. This is our twenty percent portion through the congressional earmark. We also approved a hundred five thousand, eight hundred thirty-two dollars and fifty cents for Holman Avenue Phase One Change Order Number Five. This is to replace water and sewer on Sibley through Reith Riley Construction. Our next meeting will be September nineteenth at four-thirty PM. I'm sorry, the meeting will be at five PM, but our work-study program will be at four-thirty PM, right here in the council chambers. Mr. President, following through with the community and crime watch. Community Watch at Mount Zion Pleasant View Plaza will be Wednesday, October eleventh at one PM. East Hammond Pullman Crime Watch will be at the Ophelia Steen Center, right here on Columbia Avenue, on October eighteenth at six PM. Edison Community Watch will meet Wednesday, October fifth, six-thirty PM at Edison School. Harrison Park Crime Watch will meet at the VFW on Holman Avenue, beginning at six PM on October eleventh. Hessville Crime Watch will meet Thursday, October twentieth, six PM at the Gene Shepherd Center. Irving Community Watch will meet Friday, October seventh, nine fifteen AM at Irving School. South Holman Avenue Neighborhood Watch will meet October thirteenth, which is a Thursday, at Trinity Lutheran Church on one hundred and seventy-third and Holman, that begins at six-thirty. Whiting Roberts Stale Crime Watch will meet at Calumet College, beginning at six-thirty on October thirteenth. And I should go back to, the Hessville Crime Watch will have a meeting this Thursday, September fifteenth, six PM, at the Gene Shepherd Center. As I say every meeting, you should take the opportunity to go to a community or crime watch meeting in your neighborhood and find out what's going on, and learn of some preventative measures, because community is not just about me, it's about us. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Does anybody have anything else on the committee reports? Anybody have anything else on the committee reports? No, hearing no more committee reports, committee reports are now closed. Item number nine, ordinance third reading and final passage.
Ordinance twenty-two dash thirty-one, sponsored by Councilman Torres, and ordinance vacating a portion of a north-south alley east of Calumet Avenue, lying between the forty-five-hundred block and within petitioner's property in block ten, in Toll and Avery's addition to the city of Hammond, in the city of Hammond, Lake County, Indiana.
Mr. President.
Councilman Torres.
Yeah, I move for third and final passage of ordinance twenty-two thirty-one.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilman Torres, seconded by Councilman Emerson, is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Clerk Goak, roll call.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes.
Warple. Ordinance twenty-two dash thirty-two, sponsored by Councilman Torres, and ordinance vacating a twenty-five-foot portion of the forty-five-hundred block of Cedar Avenue, lying within the petitioner's property in block eleven, in Toll and Avery's addition to the city of Hammond, in the city of Hammond, Lake County, Indiana.
Mr. President.
Councilman Torres.
Move for third and final passage of twenty-two dash thirty-two.
Motion's been made by Councilman Torres, seconded by Councilman Emerson, is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Hearing none, Clerk Goak, roll call.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes, let the record show, nine in favor, zero opposed.
Ordinance, ordinance twenty-two dash thirty-three, sponsored by Councilman Torres, and ordinance reclassifying certain lands in the city of Hammond for zoning purposes, and amending ordinance number eighty-five fourteen, and ordinance establishing a zoning plan for the city of Hammond, including the regulations and maps, to administer the zoning plan in order to provide for orderly growth and development within the city, all in accordance with the comprehensive land use plan as amended for property commonly known as forty-five forty-five Calumet Avenue in Hammond.
Mr. President.
Councilman Torres.
Move for third and final passage of twenty-two thirty-three.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilman Torres, seconded by Councilman Emerson, is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Clerk Goak, roll call.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes, let the record show, nine in favor, zero opposed.
Ordinance twenty-two dash thirty-four, sponsored by Councilman Spitali and Rakos, and ordinance amending ordinances ninety-three ninety, ninety-two oh seven, eighty-eight eighty, eighty-nine forty-two, eighty ninety-one, ninety sixteen, ninety seventy-two, ninety oh seven, ninety-one twenty-four, and ninety-three oh five, creating a voluntary retirement program in two thousand twenty-two for certain eligible employees of this city of Hammond.
Mr. President.
Councilman Rakos.
I move for third and final passage of twenty-two thirty-four.
Motion's been made by Councilman Rakos, seconded by Councilman Spitali, is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Clerk Goak, roll call.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes, let the record show, nine in favor, zero opposed.
President Warple, that concludes the ordinances for final passage.
Thank you, Clerk Goak. Item number ten, introduction of ordinances.
Item A, ordinance twenty-two dash thirty-five, an ordinance sponsored by Councilman Torres, and ordinance vacating a portion of a fourteen-foot alley south of the four-hundred block of Sibley Street, lying between Sibley Street and Fayette Street, the city of Hammond, Lake County, Indiana.
Mr. President.
Councilman Torres.
Move for first and second reading of ordinance twenty-two thirty-five. Public hearing to be set on September twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-two. Committee hearing also set for September twenty-sixth, at five fifteen, and referred to council as a whole.
Second, second.
Motion's been made by Councilman Torres, seconded by Councilman Kalwinski. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Torres.
Yeah, this is an ordinance, I mean, an alley between Fayette and Sibley Street, needed to, for construction of the development of that area, is not in use any, anymore. I encourage my colleagues to vote for it.
Is there any further discussion? Is there any further discussion? Is there any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, the ayes have it.
Item B, ordinance 22-36 sponsored by Councilwoman Vanez. An ordinance amending ordinance number 7192, otherwise known as Chapter 37.0006 of 006 of the Hammond Municipal Code pertaining to community and professional development accounts.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vanez.
Yes, I move for first and second reading of 2236.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilwoman, Councilwoman Vanez, seconded by Councilman Spatelli, is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vanez.
Yes, this is simply renaming a line item from municipal promotions to community and professional development. This pertains to the common council, the mayor, the fire department, and the police department, as recommended by the State Board of Accounts.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Is there any further discussion? Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it.
Item C, ordinance 22-37 sponsored by Councilwoman Vanez. An ordinance amending Chapter 99.65 of the Hammond Municipal Code pertaining to park traffic rules.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vanez.
I move for first and second reading of 2237.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vanez.
This is to update our parking regulations around parks. Parking will be prohibited along any park or park street from dusk until dawn unless otherwise restricted by police order or resolution or action taken by the Board of Park Commissioners. This is to eliminate people hanging around the park after dark. It also gives the police department clarification for those who are hanging around the park.
Is there any further discussion? Is there any further discussion? Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it.
President Warple, that concludes the introduction of ordinances.
Thank you, Clerk Golick. I'd like to remind people in attendance, if you wish to speak, there's a sign-in sheet there, and you'll have three minutes at the end of the meeting. Moving on, item number 11, resolutions, there are none. Item number 12, new and unfinished business. The intent to consider goes away because the ordinance passed. Is there anybody that has anything on the new and unfinished business? Does anybody have anything on the new and unfinished business? I'm stalling so people can sign the sheet. Does anybody have anything on the new and unfinished business? Hearing none, new and unfinished business is closed. Item number 13, public expression. The first speaker is Ken Bastasic. Is that, am I close?
If I make this quick, I am Ken Bastasic, I live at 6922 Marshall in Hammond, Hessville. I was here a year ago when we discussed about the dump trucks going down Kennedy Avenue. Now they're going crazy, going back and forth on 169th. They're coming from the north, turning east, going into Gary. I contacted Captain Bonner, Sergeant Holberg, Sergeant Kateris, talked to them in person. This issue is ongoing. And I have a copy of the ordinances here, which, we can make all these ordinances, but if we don't enforce them, what's the purpose? They're just abusing, because 169th is not a thoroughfare through Hessville, 165th is north to Kennedy. And again, with that one-way construction they're doing right by Freddy's, how the heck are they going to enforce that? Making those turns, tearing up those roads, those curbs, crazy. Multi-million dollar, multi-million dollar project with taxpayers' money, federal, and it's going to be abused. And another issue I have, here's pictures in the ordinance, if you want to see, about all the rules and regulations of the truck routes I got here. And I have pictures here also of the trucks parking, going across. Again, it's an issue we had last year, I spoke at the mayor's night out also. Another issue is what's going on with the building at 7147 Kennedy, the old Bargain Finder Building. I approached Scott Rakos about that, nobody knows what's going on. I contacted Chief of Inspection Kearney, he doesn't know either. I got pictures from a year ago, and I just took more pictures, it's even worse. What's going on? If my property looked like that, I would be cited. It's dilapidated, it's right next to the Lower Red Schoolhouse, right in the corner Orchard and Kennedy. What an eyesore that is for Hessville Park. It's probably five minutes, huh? It's five minutes.
You're like 30 seconds, you got 30 seconds left.
Oh, that's okay. Well, I said, it's not a thorough, they're abusing it, they said they'll take care of it. If they would issue more citations and let these people know, they're tearing up the roads, and I want my, my neighborhood safe. And again, enforcing the law, ordinances are rules and laws, and they should be enforced.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
George, you snuck up on top of the list here. You're not getting an earlier bedtime or anything, are you?
George Stoya-Robertsdale. I'm a little disappointed insofar as pursuant to the mayor's request last time around. He asked that I somehow get in touch with Dean Buttons and notify him about some of my concerns about the project in Munster. I wrote a letter to him, and I had a courtesy copy of you guys, and you guys didn't even mention it. I gave it to you guys, so they could be entered as part of the record. The problem that I have with this is, I didn't think you guys would mention it. And I spoke to a reporter, and I said, and I warned them, and I says, what do you want to bet they don't even mention it? And I'm wondering why, I don't know if it's an oversight, or you're intentionally burying it, or what's going on here? Because you've got to remember, under the right First Amendment, it ain't just public expression here. It's not just freedom of speech, it's my right to petition you guys to, to look into these matters. Petition for redress of grievances, to petition for, to look into these matters. Now, you can say, hey, you know, we don't agree with what your positions are, your hypothesis is, or whatever, your arguments, but fine, but you got to make some effort. Maybe you don't, maybe it's all political. But I'm really disappointed that, you know, it's five pages, it's a well, it's a well-reasoned letter, I mean, it's just, it's not the dispositive, it's not the final word, you know, I was just in the heat of the moment there, but I put it down there, I set it down, took the time to do it, you guys should damn well take, take time to read it. So I'd like to submit these two, copy, an original copy, the same thing, so it's in the record, because I plan to hold some of you guys accountable. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Lawson.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the council. I'm a lifelong resident of Hammond, my family moved here from Chicago in 66 to the 7500 block of Walnut, and other than, for about 11 years, since then, I have lived on that block, because I bought a house in 7545. Anyway, I have some concerns that I wanted to bring before you, I don't know what you're going to do with them, but at least it's out there. Number one, this is a residential street with kids and all that kind of thing, and we have people speeding, a lot. There are no speed limit signs, it seems like, in any of this 7500 block streets between Columbia and White Oak, anyway. I'm not even, I believe the speed limit for residential street is 25 miles an hour, but I'm not sure. I don't know what the speed limit is in the alley, either. I think it's supposed to be 10, but whatever. I personally would like to see about in the middle of the block, a speed bump put in. And I know you guys don't really like to hear about that, but, because I've, I've talked to somebody that said, yeah, no, that's not going to happen. Okay, fine, at least I'm bringing it up. Got cars going the wrong way down the street. Oh, I have in my alley, the original can that the garbage department put there way back when we started the thing of, you know, distributing garbage cans to the residents. I was wondering if you ever thought about the idea of doing a replacement program? After so many years, you know, you replace so many cans, that kind of thing? Because mine's in pretty sad shape, and I understand if I want to get another one, it's going to cost me $80, and it's like, I haven't torn it up, I mean, I just, it seems to me it's part of the deal, you know? Nothing lasts forever, and I don't know if you guys took that into account when you started the program way back when, and I realize some of you were not even on the council at that point. Let's see. Conditions of the alleys. Potholes need to be filled, I would suggest that maybe twice a year, you run a street sweeper down the alley, that would be nice, I think it would help out a lot. Maybe people would start to take a little more pride in it if they saw that it was being cleaned at one point or another. Tree trimming. Lovely streets, guys, I love all the new streets that got put in, and we got all those nice new trees, but now there, there are still low trees, and as you're coming south, say, on Walnut Avenue, coming to 174th Street, you can't see the stop sign there because of the tree, you know, because it hasn't grown up high enough to where, you know, a stop sign is clearing. Something needs to be done about those. Oh. NIPSCO went around and changed all those poles, really good thing, I suppose. Is there a way that you guys can ordain or something that, when this, something like that happens, that coordination has to be made with the cable companies and that, so that cable lines can be transferred to the new poles, so the old poles can be taken out? I think they're an eyesore, plus also too, I'm sure some of them are not all in the best of shape as they meet the ground. I have seen this in other communities, where I've been a pastor and that, and it's, I asked one of the electrical company people about that, and they said, we can't touch that stuff. And I'm like, okay, I kind of get it, there's a liability issue and all that, but you guys might want to address that with NIPSCO. And then the other thing I wanted to say about was, I can remember when I was a kid, living on that block, car seven, police car seven would come around, you know, and the police officers would chat with us and stuff like that, it was always a good community building type of thing. I can, I've been back in town after being 10 years a pastor elsewhere in the state, and over the last two years, I can tell you that the only time I've seen police cars down Walnut Avenue, at least on my block, is knocking on somebody's door because there's an issue. There is no, I, you know, I don't see them coming by regularly, there's, I don't know what the patrol, what the patrol routes look like or anything like that, and I'm not sure I want to, I mean, it's just, I think they need to be a little more visible, perhaps if they were, the speeders might slow down some too. I want to thank you for letting me speak this evening, and I hope you're able to do something with some of this. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ken, Mr. Rosick.
Greetings, Mr. President, and councilwomen and men. One thing that stuck out to me at the mayor's night out last December in Hessville, where a lot of people showed up, was a comment the city engineer made that claimed that the state of Indiana said our dunes were substandard. Knowing the place, I couldn't imagine who would say such a thing. This is a letter written by an expert, Emily Stork, Grand Calumet Region Ecologist, Indiana Department of Natural Resources, to Dean Button last August. I am reaching out today, however, because I was contacted by a number of concerned citizens about apparent plans to put a roadway through the natural area just south of the water tower on 169th Street. Moved by the number of, of number and diversity of citizens that reached out to me, I agreed to have a look at the area myself, to assess it for its natural significance. I am writing to you to let you know that after having seen the property, I was surprised at what I observed. I was immediately surprised to see the dune ridge there is a truly intact geological, geologic formation. As soon as I set foot and saw its shape, orientation, and the nat, nature of the plant community there, I knew it was an intact natural area. The canopy is dominated by black oaks, which is dominant tree species found in all of our sand dune habitats in northwest Indiana, because it is the species that is tolerant of dry conditions found in sandy soils, and also tolerant of fire. The black oaks on this dune were particularly interesting to me because they were larger than any black oaks I have ever seen on any of the 900 acres of protected remnant dune and swale in Indiana. This particularly remarkable, is particularly remarkable, be given that this dune is higher and thus drier than those found in the dune swale sites to which I'm most accustomed. Based on both their very large size, as well as their branch architecture, the trees are very old. Black oaks typically live up to 150 to 200 years old. I have seen, I have never seen black oaks that looked older than these, so my guess is they were at least 150 years old. Overall, it is a surprisingly intact piece of Indiana's natural heritage, an oasis for native plants and wildlife, as well as a surprisingly beautiful and quiet place to take a walk in otherwise busy residential neighborhood. I would be very happy to provide you with more details and observations about this area if you like. Thank you for your time, and please let me know if I can be of any service. Sign, Emily Stork. So there you have it, council members, but, you know, you don't have to take my word for this. I would like to invite the entire common council to come and take a look at these Briar East Woods. You're not going to get to know them just by people's words. Come out there and visit, and see if they're worthy of being destroyed or saved. It's up to you guys to decide how that's going to turn out. And so, I would like to make myself available, if any one of you want to go out to these dune woodlands and, and, and get a tour, please contact me, I will come at your convenience. And of course, the mayor is invited too, if he'd like to come. But I think we all need to go and see what it is that we are about to destroy. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
It's not Gary and Sylvester on that show, is it?
Yeah, Sylvester. Anyway, I don't know, maybe if you want to meet afterwards, we can discuss what we can do in Alexander Street. So, I don't know if you had, you know, the mayor announces, you guys get casino money put in every quarter to do things. I don't know, you know, what, you've got it all expensed on, but, you know, I spend, I say this, a lot of stuff because my neighbors ask me about it, you know, I go to the meetings and stuff. So they're wondering, especially the one alleyway that's getting so bad, you know, it's a 15-foot wide alley, and I had a gal, she, when her husband passed away, there was a shed that was in the alley, believe it or not, somehow it got put in the alley. She wanted tearing it down because she was banking on the alley getting completely cleaned out, the trees and the brush and all that. NIPSCO did a little bit of stuff, but, you know, that's because they had works on the pole and stuff like that, so, getting there. And same thing with, of course, Nickel Plate Street, it's getting bad, so, Dave, if you could please meet with me, and we can see what we can do. So Dave, if you could please meet with me, and we can see what we can do.
I'll talk to you after the meeting.
Okay, okay.
I actually seen a sign, though, of Nickel Plate Road at the historical building on, in, in, at the library.
Oh, really? All right, okay. I figured somebody stole it, then it was up there one time, so.
Thank you.
Anyway, thanks.
Seeing nobody else, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it.